Morning. Again. Am I muted? No. Good morning, everyone. The live stream is now working.
Morning, thank you. Ten oh one, let's see. Looks like we got everyone here, shall we? Shall we start our committee the whole? All right, my screens are popping up all over the place here, let me close. Close some things. Let me get organized here.
Do that, please.
I'll do the best, do the best I can. All right, well, um, I guess firstly, we should just call this meeting to order and it's ten oh one on January nineteenth, twenty twenty one. And we can look at the agenda here, look at last committee, the whole work session minutes, does anyone have anything to discuss regarding the minutes from from the last committee, the whole meeting? Seeing and hearing nothing, we can move on to item two presentations. Bev Green from the Cook County Council on Aging is here, welcome Bev, how are you doing?
You very well.
And Mr. Chairman, if I could, I just wanted to explain that after our organizational meeting on January fifth, I got an email from from Bev and she was expressing concern that it it sounded like maybe the the commission wasn't fully informed about what the council of aid council on aging is and what what work it does. And I thought it would be good to to have her present to to the board and just let us know about the great work that they're doing. And I also want to mention, I had a chance to visit with with Bev and some other folks at the hub last week and really enjoyed that conversation and learned a lot about their work. So I think you'll you'll enjoy this presentation. Thanks.
Thank you, James. And that's a that's yes, there are many facets to to the county board here. And so we don't all see the same things that are going on. And my perspective on the council on aging is very limited. So I'm gonna greatly appreciate the presentation. Would you like to proceed, Bev?
Sure, will do. And thank you very much for having me. And I as well, and so did Chris and Bill enjoyed having James down here last week for coffee and the time to to talk about what we do and who we do. After the annual meeting and I was listening, I thought, you know, we get a lot of funding from the county. We always have for years. And I'll just proceed into my presentation here about who the Cook County Council on Aging is. First of all, I am the director here. I've been here since two thousand seven in some form of the assistant director and then the director. I also have grew up grew up here in the summertime and moved here permanently in nineteen ninety one. And I've always been involved in public health and human services in some way personally, either through daycare or in home support. I've held various positions on advisory councils and and that with public health, the community health board community or the human service board. I've always had an interest in the social service and of the government, you might say. I'll skip to the slide that that says doing business as the Cook County Council on Aging is the legal nonprofit organization. It is ran by a board of directors.
Sorry, Bev, if I could interject, would you like me to to show your slides while you're talking?
Um, if you want to, yeah, I I can't. So I don't know. I don't not that tech savvy.
Hey, let me let me see if I can make that work. Hang on just a second here.
Brady, we got a little feedback.
I'm gonna mute here.
All right, looks like I can see the screen. Bev, would you like to proceed?
Okay, so how how do we advance this then?
You could just say like, well, James, you're on mute right now, but you could just say next slide, please. And then James can click and
Okay, if you go to next, next slide, James. The next slide. And here's our contact information for the council on aging and our address and everything. And I welcome people to stop down and visit, email me if you ever have any questions or call. I'm always available for for feedback also. Next slide. The council on aging has done business as well formerly the Cook County Senior Center, we are now the hub. And first and second thrift store. These are two businesses that that we operate programming under the Cook County Council on Aging. The hub is doing services out of here for the community and various other things that we'll talk about. And the first and second thrift store is a thrift store that is ran by the Cook County Council on Aging as part of our programming. The next slide. Our mission statement, the Cook County Council on Aging exists to be the center of activity for adults in the community, providing resources, programs, and activities that promote healthy lifestyles, cultivate relationships, and enhance lifelong learning. And next slide, we use various acronyms for the Cook County Council on Aging. Sometimes we're the CCC away, sometimes with the council, the county senior center, senior center, center. Now I should have put the hub on there too. The first and second thrift store, first and second store. So you'll see various things there. Little bit about our history on the next slide. The Cook County Council on Aging started out as back in the nineteen sixties as the Golden Age Club. It was a group of people that got together and they had seen the need for support as people aged and services back then were few and far between. And so they would get together and talk about services and what was needed and and develop programs from there over the years. And it was a social club. They got together a lot for dances and dinners and and that they would. I was reading some history last week that Sharon Bloomquist left behind. And they actually started some of the things in hotels that in the winter, especially in the wintertime when the hotels were closed, they would hotel owners would let people meet there. They were in the Mason's Building that was up by the clinic for a while. So they've been kind of all over. And back in the seventies, they purchased this building down here, which was much smaller scale than it is now. And started their the actual programming for the Cook County Council on Aging. And the nutrition program that is a huge part of our programming right now was started back in November in nineteen seventy five with along with Arrowhead Economic Opportunity Agency. They have been a big partnership in providing our food program here over the years and and they continue to be. We've had four additions and onto this building. It was started, actually, it was a workshop garage. And then it was curve foot wounded and it was an outfitter guide building. And then the council on aging bought it. And bathrooms were at and kitchen were added on in one project garage and workshop. The garage was enlarged to compete the Arrowhead Transit Bus now. And then the two addition of the social rooms on the side were done back in the nineteen nineties. Cook back then, Cook County government had a big part part in this, the council on aging. They actually provided financial assistance and oversight for the activities and programs that came out of the senior center down here. They had employees, the director and assistant director were employed by the Cook County Government. And on if you go to the next slide, there's the funding and who funded what? The Cook County up until two thousand eight paid for everything that's listed on the left side there under Cook County paid for. And then the council on aging paid for what's on the right side. And back in, I believe it was two thousand six discussion began about letting go of the the oversight in the financial assistant, the way it the way it was with employees. They wanted to stop micromanaging. And so there was discussion about Cook County Council on Aging going out on its own. And that finally did happen with the retirement of Sharon Bloomquist in two thousand eight. She retired in Ju- January of two thousand eight and the the new director, which was a different lady than myself. She was hired under the Cook County Council on Aging. So the county gave up and they agreed in with, you know, funding to continue, be able to continue they with a memo of understanding. So we had applied for grant funding and and that each year since two thousand eight. On the next slide, the Cook County funding history, that is a history of what we've requested since the release of the employees. And so this is what we have gotten over the years. Cook County's been a big supporter. So I thought this is one reason why I thought it was very important that you all know what what happens down here because you have been a big supporter of the programming that comes out of here. On the next slide shows other sources of funding that that we get. We get various grants. And we have program fees on some of our programs down here. And we put, we have collection boxes out down here that people put money in. We get private donations and and donation some different businesses and that. And of course, we do fundraising. Covid's kind of put a damper on our funding sources and but we made it through last year with some special covid funding grants. On the next slide is gets into our programs and services that we have. There is some of our programs are direct, I consider them direct programming. These are programs that we actually do and provide down here and that our staff is involved in. And then we have indirect programming. There are other agencies that use space down here such as the clinic for foot care and health, different health programs. But we coordinate all of that's those programs together. And so we consider those indirect programming. And then on the next page is our food program. Our food program is a big part of our programming here. Like I said before, it's been going since nineteen seventy five. AOA used to be the employee, employ the cook. And then was in total control over the program. We, the council on aging back in twenty fourteen, wanted little more control on menus and and food purchasing and and nutrient nutrition things. So we went out on our own with AOA's blessing. And we do continue to partner with AOA in that they get a block grant from the federal government for the older American funds. And so we are able to take advantage of that funding through AUA. And so people can come down, have a meal. If they register, their meal is four dollars. They have to be over sixty in order to get that discounted rate. And then AOA reimburses us three dollars and fifty eight cents per meal. So an actual meal is seven, we get seven fifty eight. Somebody under sixty are welcome at all times and they would pay seven fifty for the meal. So it's a it's a great program. Our numbers have gone up. We were averaging about three, about three seventy five to four hundred meals a month pre covid. And we're up to about six fifty to seven hundred a month now. So it's um, and we've been open this during the entire covid time and with the concentration mostly on the food program. The first and second thrift store on the next slide is our second large program programming that we have. It was started back in oh seven, lot you oh six discussion started with just a bunch of people from the community who were interested in in volunteering and and they wanted someplace they could go to purchase, you know, gently used items, places to recycle items. And so the thrift store was was formed. And we have been able to give out back to the community over seven hundred thousand dollars back into the community. I just mailed out the twenty twenty, we call them payout checks yesterday. So this program, the store itself is ran by all volunteers. I do the bookkeeping under my job here and then the data logging for time. Otherwise, the store itself is ran by all volunteers. Nobody's paid over there. So it's a great, great place. People, people enjoy doing it because they want to get back to so another nonprofit of their choice. They like the socialization. It gets people out of the house. After people retire, most people, you know, instead of sitting around, they still want to be remain active. And this is a program where they're able to do that. On the next slide is some of our direct programming that we actually provide here. We have an emergency phone system that we install. It's like a lifeline. If people fall or they're sick, they can summon help twenty four seven. We have, we have a response center in Austin, Minnesota that answers those calls twenty four seven. And we work with Grand Portage, a clinic, the hospital, social services with clients to to get those phones installed. Some clients pay privately, Grand Portage pays for their clients. Some people, clients that are working with social services are on waivers of some sort. And they then the program or the phone system is paid through that. The equipment is free for the folks to use. The equipment just remains belonging to the hub and we, there's a thirty dollar monitoring fee per month. And that's for the twenty seven, twenty four seven monitoring of the system. The system tells us when the batteries are low. And so we go out and we change those for the people on the pendants or the unit itself. So it's really, it's a great thing. I've heard so many horror stories up here about people falling and cracking heads and and where they're ill and they just, you know, need something. And so it's been a, it's been a life support for a lot of people. We help people with come in and they have questions on bills or applications they're having issues with. We can sit down and go through that with them. Sometimes people bill, get a an error on a bill or something. They don't understand it. And to make calls to some of these companies is unbelievable. And you know, sometimes the elderly people just they're, they don't have patience. They don't have the technology. And so we're able to walk them through that with them in our office and and that. So we help assistant coordinating transportation in and out of Cook County, either privately. We use care partners or the bus and help people with that. Client care coordination, we kind of do, we do that down here. But we also partner with Public Health and Human Services, the hospital, the clinic, Grand Portage to ensure that our clients that we might all have a connection with are getting the care and the services that they need and when they need them. We have computers, public computers down here that are available for people to come in. We have wifi, people bring their computers, iPads, cell phones, whatever, come in and and are able to access that. We help people with copies and faxes. See, help navigate different food sources up here besides the food program we have. We have the food shelf from these pantry. We have different, lots of different food programs here. And so we help people find what they need and and navigate through those systems. We're a big housing advocate. We've got four senior apartment complexes or three, three senior apartment complexes. And a public apartment complex and then two senior condo units. And sometimes they have issues, you know, with there with landlord disputes or help with the application, some of the applications are, you know, two, three pages long, some are thirty pages. And so we can help people with that. Emergency help with food or household needs. A play, people come down here to socialize and just meet up with the other people. And there's always crafts, music, puzzles, books, games going on down here that people can come in and do. And of course, that brings people in and a lot of times then there's a socialization going on there too. And right now during covid, socialization and isolation has been a huge, huge thing. So we've been encouraging people to come in. We have a book and puzzle and game lending library down here. And we've encouraged people to come down and pick those things up still, even though we are closed to the public. Our door, doors are locked, but we're still doing things one on one with clients and and the people in the community. We have medical equipment loan closet. People donate their unused lockers, crutches, wheelchairs, toilet seat risers, commodes. And so we keep a supply of that down here and people are able to come down and loan that stuff. Maybe they need it short term or maybe they need it long term, but it's, there's always equipment available for people. We used to have that medical supply place here where the pharmacy is, I think it was the old pharmacy or the, now it's our our colony. And after that, when I went out of business, we we have always had a lot of people looking for that stuff. There's a book club that meets down here. I'm not sure if they're meeting right now during covid. And but we sure have been still encouraging people to stop in and get books and read. Let's see, we Chris Bausch is our programs coordinator and she's always got presentations and and things of special topics of things. Might be sometime the sheriff would be down and talk about scams. One time he did a drug presentation. We've had the veterans officers in here talking about vet services. And so it might might be something that is of interest to people that's going on right now. And we'd love to have James come down and and talk once we get back open up and get to know the county and our city officials. A lot of people have no clue who you guys are. We have a healthy living support group that actually started out of HTC when Human Development Center was up here. It's a mental, it started as mental health support. But everybody is welcome to come to that. They, that's a pretty large group. There's probably twelve to eighteen people that meet every Monday. They have not been meeting during covid. And that's been especially hard on a lot of those people. We do keep in contact with those people by phone calls periodically to check in to see how they are doing. And I guess that it's been a, it's been a hard time. And so when we're not using our building, the building is available for rentals, for meetings, events, parties. At night, Monday and Thursday nights AA was in here. And any other night of the week and weekends, people would rent the building for either a meeting or private parties. And so that, so the the building is really used in a, in a community way. It started out as the senior center and we we see the need for not only the older folks needing services and that. And there are so many things that younger people are interested in down here or come here for. And so, and so that was one of the reasons we changed the name from this, the senior center to the hub because we are basically the hub of Cook County as far as services and and programs available. The next slide is a list of organizations and agencies that we partner up with. Some are locally, some are Duluth. They come up and provide services here. Our newest programming coming in right now is with legal aid. We always had a attorney come up once a month and would be down here at the senior center. And clients could come in and talk about things with the with an attorney from legal aid. And during covid, they haven't done that. And now they're, they have installed on two kiosks. One is gonna be used, people can come in and do self research, legal stuff, fill out applications, do intakes on it. The other one will serve as a portal for attorneys and their clients and possibly court hearings. And this, these, this is being the project that's being done actually statewide. And we've had the Blood Mobile up here. We sponsor the Blood Mobile. We are an emergency management site here for Cook County, have been for many, many years. The last time it was used was a couple of years ago when we had power outages in the middle of the wintertime in parts of the city. And it, they went on for hours. And twice that winter, we opened up and they brought the emergency management trailer down with the cots and and all that. And we had about three, four people that showed up. And for some reason, we had electricity downtown here and other parts of the city did not. So we opened up for that. Let's see, the clinic comes down, does outreach clinics down here with client care coordination. Excuse me, they provide foot care and then blood pressure and and blood sugar tests once a month each. And so let's see, and then the Duluth Ferry Agency on Aging. They provide the senior linkage line, which is a resource and referral line. And you can get a lot of the information of what we do on there. But it is a St. Louis County based thing. And I don't know that, I don't know that that many people use it. I haven't, when I mention it to people, they never, they've never heard it. And so we, but it's a good resource if you're looking for information and resources. Medicare counseling, they come up, used to come up once or twice a month to do dairy, especially during open enrollment. And then do different Medicare presentations out of there. If you, a lot of you guys aren't old enough for Medicare, I'm not yet either, almost. But Medicare is so complex. And people when they come of age for Medicare, they get inundated in the mail brochures and different things from different insurance companies about signing up for Medicare. And it gets really, really confusing. Some Medicare policies accept will pay for some drugs, some won't. So they sit down and they actually work one on one. So they sit down and they actually work one-on-one with a client on their, the client's medical history, the prescriptions are on. So it gets pretty complex. In a time when we get older and things should get easier, that gets a lot more complicated. Um, on the next page is um, indirect services that we um, and our, the partners that we work with. The state of Minnesota for years has been doing driving testing down here. Um, our many members here, young and old, come in for written tests, behind-the-wheel tests. Um, if they didn't do them here, they'd have to go to Duluth. Cause that is something that the um, the DMV over at Terrabella does not do. Um, Alcohol Anonymous is in here Mondays and Thursdays. We have Lighthouse Center for Vision Loss uh, comes up and they have support group. They also um, have equipment and training um, that they provide and, and they have. And then they can lend out equipment and demonstrate um, to clients who are experiencing vision loss. We uh, work with various um, art and craft groups um, to have demo days and play days here um, for folks. Um, and. Grand Portage, we coordinate. Care for clients, emergency phones, transportation with them. The school uh, provides, has been providing students along with uh, Boreal Media um, to come down and help people with um, their tech um, questions. That is though, that's been a pretty big program. The mentoring program. Before COVID, we had a, we were paired up with a fifth grade class of, but I um, the main school and, excuse me. And they um. Would meet twice a month, once down here and once up at the hub, school. They would do different reading projects, arts and crafts. Um, and a lot of these were forming. For, forming intergenerational relationships and it was pretty neat to see that program. Um, Arrowhead Transit is out of this office or out of this building. Um, they provide the bus transportation around town to Duluth, Grand Portage has a commuter route. They're available for special event transportation. Um, and people can charter that um, the buses um, on weekends also in that. Lot of big events up here, the Ham Lake Run, um, some different other events up the trail. Have used Arrowhead Transit um, for transportation purposes. And then our food program um, with A, with AOA also. They've um, done, they, like I said before, they um, fund, help fund our programming. Um, and we've become a distribution site at, at times for AOA's uh, food uh, distributions. During COVID and the um, increase in our meals. We were running out of storage space for like cold stuff, freezer and refrigerator space. And then our stove was going boot on us. And so they purchased um, new equipment for us. Equipment is staying belonging to them, but we're able to use it here. So that's kind of that in a nutshell. Does anybody got any questions?
James, if you could exit um, the screen share now, I can see everybody, thank you. Yeah, Commissioner Sullivan.
I just wanna thank Bev for the great presentation. And I did have an opportunity to go to their meeting last uh, Wednesday, the Council on Aging. And had an overview of their financials. Um, Bev does a great job of keeping track of everything and all of the volunteers and the volunteer hours. And I've had a chance to see the benefits of uh, volunteers choosing to donate their money, which this year is at fifteen fifty an hour. Uh, to a variety of nonprofits in our community. So it really benefits many, many people. And um, I am of the age, I've had a chance to participate in some of the senior programming um, down at the hub. As I call it, and I've benefited from some of the work that's been provided regarding Medicare research. And the senior linkage line, and they provide wonderful resources for our uh, gray-haired community. So I just wanna thank Bev and all the people that she works with that um, really help us out in a huge way. And they've done a tremendous job during COVID, almost doubling the number of meals that they provide our community. And just a heartfelt thanks to you.
Thank you, Ann.
Yeah, anybody else have any questions? Commissioner Hawkins. Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Starley, I saw Commissioner Hawkins' hand first.
She's first.
Okay.
That's okay, I can wait. Bev, thanks so much for your report. Um, are you doing meals on wheels?
Yes, we are, we're doing meals on wheels and our dining, uh, in dining has now gone to takeout only. And so, and that's been, you know, pretty popular. We've um, we have some folks from like Pike Lake area. Our Meals on Wheels only goes out five miles. And we've had um, some folks from the West End from Shorter, um, Pike Lakes uh, area up the Gunflint Trail. They come in um, and get, we have frozen meals also, I should have mentioned that. So people can come in and they'll pick up like five, six uh, frozen meals and then take them home. And so that, you know, they have got, you know, that's another way people can access the food um, is that way.
Great, thank you.
Commissioner Hawkins, did you have a question?
Yeah, I'm wondering about the county funding levels. I know you probably always want more money than you are given. And how do we determine how much money the county uses to support this?
Well, it used to be the county commissioners up until about three, four years ago. The county commissioners used to um, have a non-discretionary uh, fund. And we fell in that area. Um, and then we, and I say we, usually it was the treasurer and myself would go before the county commissioners and plea. You know, why we needed the funding and that. And it was a time that the county commissioners could ask questions of us, you know, about the funding request. Um, and then the funding changed and it was given to Public Health and Human Services. And our funding request, the, the funding request that we used to get, we're pretty much at the levels asked for. But ever since Public Health and Human Services has, has gotten it. Um, what we request for usually has been less, quite a bit lesser amount. Um, and so it's um, it's gotten more challenging um, that way. Um, and we aren't, it, when, one thing that's little, was a little disappointing with the change was. We were not able to go and discuss, you know, or have question and answer with the, whoever is the decision-making. Uh, entity on public health. Um, you know, to, to discuss why we're asking for this funding. So, and, and so it's been, it's been a little challenging this last few years.
You have data on the demographics of the people that are using all your services?
The numbers?
Numbers, ages, I'm wondering, are we mostly over eighty or the, you know, how many? Where, where does it?
We don't, we, we don't track them by age, age. Um, and mainly because there's so many people in and out of this building when we're open. That, you know, it, yeah, would be very time-consuming to do that. Um, the food program is, they have to be over sixty in order to qualify. Probably ninety percent of those, no, probably ninety-five percent of the meals are over, over um, sixty.
Ann, I have one more question, just because I'm curious. I know the, the first and second store building, the old bowling alley. Is that rented or do we own it or?
Oh, you're talking about Odds and Ends?
Yes.
The, yes. Yeah, we're not Odds and Ends, we're first and second.
That has nothing to do with this group, okay.
Nothing to do. We are across from the Dairy Queen in the Cobblestone Building, which is um, owned by Brian and Marcy Olson. And uh, we rent the, that space down there.
I was under the impression they had the same hours, volunteer hours that go back to the community. So I just assumed it went to you.
Oh, okay, no, Odds and Ends is um, set up the same way. Actually, Arvis um, Thompson and Sharon Bloomquist, um, who started Odds and Ends. Used to be a part of the first and second thrift store and then they went out on their own. Um, there had been a need, the first and second thrift store has always had a smaller, much smaller space. And we used to get a lot of um, wanting furniture donations and, you know, big, large items. And we never had the space for them. And so Sharon and, and Arvis, they decided that they would start um, Odds and Ends. And which would be a much bigger place. And then um, you know, they could accept furniture. They deal mostly with all furniture, household goods. Very, very little clothing do they have in there. And we're, we're more the clothing and, you know, smaller household type items. So the two entities are completely different. Um, and, and, but they do have the same volunteer concept where they pay out to the um, the public. Now, la, I heard um, they did not have a payout last year. Their overhead in that building is much, much larger than what ours is. Um, and so they did not have a payout um, last year for, during COVID. So we've been very fortunate and our, the store was closed for about two and a half months last year. Um, and we were still able to um, to do a payout this year, so.
One more on my list. So the Lifeline program sounds really good and I know people who have used that service. And I'm wondering, how, what are the numbers there? How many people have signed up for this?
We have um, there's twenty-five people that, twenty-six people that are on that right now. We are waiting to find out. A lot of people want, um, because people still, even though you might need a Lifeline service, doesn't mean that you're stuck to your home. With this unit, it only works in your home. And with new technology coming out, um, there's a new unit out that we don't have um, with the company that we use. Um, that works off of cellphone towers. And so people can use it like in their home or if they're out and about in the community. Trouble is you have to have a cellphone. So we're looking into getting new um, some new um, equipment um, for that. Um, cause we've lost a few people on our um, list that have gone to that type of uh, service. And so that's uh, next on our radar here um, is to, to check into that. But right now we've got twenty-six clients all over the county that are um, that are on that program. You have to have a landline. Um, so people that don't have cellphone service, it um, you know, it works, it works very well. But people don't wanna have a landline anymore, but have a cellphone. Um, we need to get into the next technology um, level for that.
Yeah.
Please, anybody has any other questions? You know, even after, please call or stop down, we're always, you know, always wanting to visit.
Yeah, the only other, only other question I was hoping, or it's not a direct question, but maybe more of a conversation was just looking at the slide. Um, or believe it's um, would this be slide nine? Um, Cook County Funding History goes back to two thousand eight. And um, the, the amount requested I've noticed is um, on a downward trend there. And I've also, you know, also noting that all except for three years. The amount received is below that and also on a downward trend. So it, it seems like the challenges have maybe been more than just the last three years or so. Um, do you have, can you help give us any perspective on, on uh, on those changes and that trend?
Um, well, the trend was the county always wanted to get away from micromanaging us. Um, which included the funding. And of course, the county, you know, levies have been huge for people. Um, you know, for the county in the last, you know, quite a few years. I, and I wonder sometimes how that might have affected that also. Um, and I'm, like I said, I'm not sure what's happened with our funding. Um, you know, being quite a bit lesser in the last few years. Um, so yeah, I don't know, maybe Brady might have more on that. Um, because he would be in on those behind-the-scenes decision, you know, making.
Yeah, yeah, I can, I can certainly ask about on the, on the county side of things. And I have a little bit of perspective on, on, on how the Public Health and Human Services grants um, are. A little bit of perspective on that process, I haven't been a part of the process, but, but I'm familiar with it. Um, but I just noticed the amount requested is also on that downward trend. And so that's what I was looking for perspective on is have your, I can't imagine your costs have gone down.
Oh, no.
Right, and so I'm, I'm curious about why that amount requested is continually going down. When I'm assuming in actuality, your costs and needs are actually going up and just how that dynamic is working. If you're getting more outside grant funding to compensate, or I guess first and second is certainly playing a, you know, helping subsid, or. You know, helping with the, the funding issue, um, but.
Right, right.
What, yeah, there's a lot of moving parts there, I was hoping for, to flesh that out a little bit more.
Yep, no, as far as what, what we have requested, we have been um, much to, you know, we run a tight budget around here and that. Um, and we have um, with the food program and expanding on that, um, we've been able to, there's a lot of money out there for food. So, you know, we've taken advantage of the grant money for that. Um, both, you know, the county round, kind of different county grants that are available within the county and outside of the county also. Um, there's over the years too, um, we've had a lot more um, public donations coming in. Um, and that, whether it's been just, we have collection cans around here that people, you know, put money in when they're here and, and for, you know. Different reasons. And then um, our solicitations and that, from, from that. A lot of the businesses in Cook County have been very good to us over the years. So our, we just have really ramped up our um, grant and, you know, donation, public donations. So that's been, you know, a, a big part of it, so.
Okay.
Yeah, we've been, unfortunately, we've been able to, you know, our funding's gone down from the county. But yet our services have, you know, gone up, up, up and, and that. So as far as, you know, what we've been doing around here. And, you know, like a lot of nonprofits and, you know, a lot of it is our, our cost is wages. And so um, it um, but, you know, you can't, without staff, you can't do what we do.
Yeah, and you do a lot, so thank you very much, um, and thank you for the presentation. Um, I, it's funny, cause clearly I'm from, I'm familiar with the hub and I'm also familiar with first and second. I just wasn't familiar with the council on aging, so, and that's what.
Yeah, yeah. That's what I told one of my board members afterwards, I said, you know, you, people hear about the hub, they hear about the store. And, but they don't hear about the Cook County Council on Aging. And so a lot of people, when I talk to them about, who do you work for, the Cook County Council on Aging, who? You know, they're just surprised and, and that, but you know, that's, you know, the organization over and above the hub and the first and second thrift stores, so. So I, I was surprised when I first heard it at the annual meeting, but then I wasn't surprised, cause a lot of people don't know who the Cook County Council on Aging is. And I just wanted you guys to know who they are, because we do partner so much with the county. Um, and other, you know, entities to provide these services, so.
Thank you very much, yeah, it's, it's a very, very important and, and clearly a significant player in our community and.
Yes.
Amazing work, thank you.
Have been for what, forty, forty? Have been for, what, forty, forty-five years? Long time in some form. Not me, but in some way.
Yeah, you're keeping it going though. So thank you.
Oh, I love my job and I love the people here and I love this community. It just, we couldn't do it without this whole entire community.
Yeah, here, here. All right. Well, any other questions or comments for Bev? Otherwise, we've got, we we had a question mark on our committee assignments. And and the Cook County Council on Aging was one of those question marks. And otherwise, we had, I believe, written in Commissioner Storey onto that without without an alternate necessarily, but Yes, yes, yes. And and looking forward to updates in the future.
Commissioner Mills?
Yeah, yes, Commissioner Storey.
So Bev, that was confusing because of the way it was described on my board and committee. And so we're gonna, it'll be resolved.
Okay. And Ginny, as long as I have you here real quick. We change, we used to have our meetings when you were the alternate on Tuesday, but because emergency management meetings, we had to change it to Wednesday. Do you have a conflict with Wednesday?
I do, and I've talked to Ann about that. So Commissioner Sullivan will be the commissioner from the county and I will be her alternate.
Okay, okay.
Because if you remember before Commissioner Burscham was the commissioner and I was his alternate.
Right, yep, yep. And because he was, he was tied up in emergency management meetings on Tuesdays with COVID, we changed our meetings to Wednesdays to accommodate him. And so, and I think, and I think we've got it figured out the other day for Ann to attend, so.
Yeah, we worked it out.
We're on a roll.
Okay, good.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
And, yeah, we'll have to formalize that switch, but that's no big deal because we'll be certain revisiting some others, especially with the commissioner from District One joining the team here. So, but we'll, we'll get things formalized as need be. All right, toggling back. We're on to the Highway Department Engineer. Engineer Haas, welcome. And thank you for being here and providing some good material to discuss.
Kind of dense. So I hope everybody had a minute to at least kind of look stuff over a little bit. What we're gonna do, Josh and I are gonna each give a presentation. I'll kind of go first and go over some stuff, then we'll switch over to Josh and then I'll kind of finish it out. If you have questions, let's kind of wait till the end just because it is a lot to get through. But we'll, we'll do our best to address everything, so.
Sounds great.
Yeah, give me a second here to get all this going. At least see the screen and hopefully now it looks kind of fancy. Cool.
Very fancy.
Very fancy, good. So, you know, as this says, this is our, this is our levy discussion. Specifically, what we're gonna be going over is the the dollars that we get from the levy. I understand they're state aid dollars, but that's not what this is going to be about. Our goal is to develop long-term and sustainable department plans. So right here, you can see our kind of our levy breakdown. It also includes funds from, oh, not seeing presentation view. Sorry. Let's try this. My apologies. Technical difficulties, right?
Here to help, Robbie.
Oh, where are we? Oh, I got three screens, that's why. Isn't that fussy? All right, can we see that? So it should say twenty twenty-one levy apportionment?
Yes, sir. Yep.
It's always here.
Well, I mean,
And the notes on the side.
Yeah, we see, let's see your title bar and, you know, all the 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 sub-screens and all that, so.
Let's see if this works.
There's notes on the side and that also has next slide now. There you go.
Let's try this. Any better?
Not yet.
Well, I don't have anything weird written in my notes.
Famous last words.
Can we see it okay, though, at least? I think it's funny. I'm in my office and I have my laptop and now there's like three screens and it gets distributed all goofy. So I apologize.
Oh, it's, it looks fine.
It's okay? All right. A little flustered, right? Anyhoo's, so now you can see our levy apportionment for twenty twenty-one. It includes our Superior National Forest Funds. And what we did is we kind of broke it down into these four or five additional topics. You have administration expenses, our levy dependent maintenance expenses, shop, non-reimbursable engineering, and then equipment replacement and road project. And we left that as a last thing because that's kind of not super day-to-day operations. You know, everything else is kind of like, this is what we do every day. What's left over is kind of our big ticket items, what we have to figure out how to fund. In each of these scenarios, there's obviously everybody's wages are tied into that. What I really wanted to make sure, too, was to make sure that our wages were comparable with the rest of the state. I think that's an easy thing to look at right of way. So every year, the counties put out a wage survey and they break it down by each job position. And so I know when I looked up, you know, for example, my salary, mechanics, our technicians, our maintenance workers. And comparing what I wanted to do, too, is compare it to other small counties to see. You know, obviously, Penopin County or, you know, some Ramsey County would be, you know, not a fair comparison to up here. And so when I did that, I did see that our wages were comparable or lower to those that were of like a similar population size to us. And so just kind of wanted to, I was curious about that. Did it change slides?
I'm afraid not.
What is happening? This is terrible.
It might be that you're still in that display settings. Oop, something changed. And we're on to a different slide.
Now you're on my mail.
Well, no, I never saw your mail, but now we don't have any screen.
This is.
I'll keep giving a play-by-play if you want.
Thank you. No, it helps. It helps. It helps for sure.
We did our last one in Teams. We've been shuffling
Oh, yeah.
Softwares a lot. And we got it, we did all our practicing in Teams and got it down and now we're on Zoom and Yeah. Curve has come back.
It's different. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, sorry. Now, I'm assuming you can see the taskbar on the side. Okay, that's fine. At least you can see the slides.
Nope.
So we'll go over, so that was, I just talked about the levy apportionment. And so the first thing we'll talk about is administration expenses. And then non-reimbursable engineering expenses. So admin expenses covers myself, the accountant and accounting clerks, wages and benefits, our day-to-day supplies and expenses, as well as engineering tech, training and travel. And so that total is about three hundred and eighty thousand dollars. Our non-reimbursable engineering expenses includes the technician benefits as well as non-project specific work. Most of the work our techs do is billed to a specific project. And so this is the category where it does not cover that. So that's about eighty thousand dollars. If we talk about our levy dependent maintenance, maintenance expenses, here's kind of a breakdown. I break these down further, too, in the next couple of slides. But this, this one had a lot of line items. And so I thought it warranted, you know, a bigger discussion. But you can see personnel, two minutes maintenance, gravel maintenance, our winter maintenance, salt and sand, general maintenance and projects. And what we're able to do here is you'll see the projected state aid allotment. And what we can do is take that allotment out of what we spend in the county. Reason being is there's a lot of overlap between, you know, how we work on our state aid roads and our county roads. And so once we subtract out our state aid allotment, you can see what we're left with, which is what we called our levy dependent maintenance expenses. So that total is about eight hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. What I'll show you next is those broken down a little more. So you can see what we, you know, each line item and personnel, bituminous gravel maintenance. Something that kind of sticks out to me when I was talking, I'm gonna make a lot of comparisons to, you know, because we're a small population county. And so I wanted to compare it to other small population counties. And so what I did is I looked up the the ten smallest counties in the state, more or less. And, you know, we fall right in the middle, population-wise. And so I wanted to kind of do some comparisons with them. And what was interesting is talking to them, you know, you can see our calcium chloride, to me, sticks out as a lot. And I was curious what they did. And we're the only county that spends this much on calcium chloride. Every other county puts it, at least that I talked to, on the residents, actually. Not saying that's what we should do at all. I'm just saying, as far as comparison-wise, that is what they do. So, yeah, so as far as, you know, providing dust control in front of local residents, they they go out and do that themselves. Here's the remainder, general road expenses, maintenance projects. A summary of our shop expenses. You can see personnel, utilities, fuel, parts and supplies. You end up with about seven hundred eighty-four thousand dollars. And so then here's kind of all that summarized together. You can see from the levy and our Superior National Forest Funds starts at about two point four million. You start subtracting everything out of there, dwindles down pretty quick. But you can see we're left with just under about three hundred and sixty thousand dollars a year, or at least this next year, to cover replacing equipment and road projects. And road projects would be paving county roads or replacing bridges on county roads. So what I'll get into now is a little infrastructure status. And this is all information just pulled from our state aid website. Anybody can go look at it if they would like to. So every year, MINDOT puts together a annual bridge update, if you will, or bridge survey throughout the whole state. The nice thing is, is they break it down locally as well. And so you can look at, you know, in the whole state, there's a little over fifteen thousand bridges on the local highway system. Of those, about eleven hundred are considered structurally deficient or functionally obsolete. So that puts you at about seven, a little over seven percent. Right now in Cook County, we have fifty-eight bridges. Thirteen of those bridges are considered structurally deficient or functionally obsolete. So you can see that puts us up pretty high. Just under about a quarter of our structures are considered structurally deficient. Similarly, our bridges are given a sufficiency rating, kind of a score out of a hundred. And on average, we are the second worst in the state as a whole. So our infrastructure is not in a good place. And so again, when I was looking at this, I was like, well, how are these other smaller counties doing? And so what you can do, again, you can look up, you know, our smaller counterparts. And you can see that a lot of our smaller counties have two, three, sometimes four times as many bridges as we do with a tiny, tiny fraction of the deficiency. And so, you know, that kind of stuck out to me as, you know, some, something that's wrong. Of those fifty-eight bridges that we have in Cook County, twenty-six of them are levy dependent, meaning they're on a county road. And then I broke down each of those bridges by type. So you can see the vast majority of our bridges are some type of culvert. Culverts ten feet and over are considered a bridge. So that's the majority of ours. You can see we have a number of timber bridges and pre-stress concrete bridges as well. So my my animation gets ruined because I can't present this right. But what I wanted to show was, you know, right now, here is a list of our structurally deficient county bridges up here. The ones I have highlighted are the ones that are, do not have a reliable funding source. So I've applied for grants and I've applied for state bridge bonding, federal money, that type of stuff. But that's if we get it. The only thing that's reliable are those two bridges that are not highlighted there. Is the Cross River Bridge up on County Road forty-six. And the Carlson Creek Bridge on County Road seventy-one. It's Moose Valley Road. We're paying with those with some of our transportation sales tax cash. And I'll elaborate a little more later on on the T S T fund. Bridge cost, obviously, that's what this gets into. You can see I pulled this from, they just put out the twenty twenty information. I pulled this from twenty nineteen. Just because we, you know, we just got it. I'm not, I'm imagining the price only goes up, but, you know, it's not gonna be too different from what we have here. So you can see this is kind of average cost. That can vary widely, project to project. We have culverts with an estimated cost of over six hundred thousand dollars in some cases, some or less. But you can see, you know, on average, for the brunt of our bridge work, being these these culverts, you're looking at around three hundred and fifty to four hundred thousand dollars. You can see how much a pre-stress bridge costs easily. Easily one, you know, one point two million. That doesn't include the approach costs, though. So any roadway work is not included in there. So that would only drive up the cost more. As far as roadways, we don't have a lot of paved county road miles. Six point seven five miles as of the latest survey, I believe. And how we measure the pavement quality is by the pavement quality index, P Q I. It's a rating out of, I think it's four and a half. So in the county, we have kind of a wide range on our little chunks. Our P Q I ranges from zero point five to two point nine. And that's spread out over a number of locations. It's kind of little chunks here and there. Anything under a one point nine, though, you should resurface. And so what you can see is, you know, from our six point seven five miles, about three and a half miles qualifies for a full reclamation and resurfacing. And then another three or so miles qualifies for just resurfacing. So as a whole, you add that up, you can see pretty much all of our county roads qualify for resurfacing based on that metric. Generally, too, when we look at cost, you're looking at about a million dollars per mile to pave. We don't have a lot of pavement, but, you know, that can change over time. I looked at a couple of different sources to try and figure out, you know, what's what's kind of a transition from gravel roads to paving roads? Like, what's a good traffic number to look at? And so the EPA recommends anywhere from fifty to four hundred average vehicles per day. That does a pretty big range. And so I looked at another source through the U of M. They have a number of research, research boards and committees that put out papers. And so generally, you look at lists like one fifty, one hundred, two hundred, somewhere in that vicinity, one to two hundred vehicles per day on average is a good number to start looking at, hey, maybe we should consider paving this road. There's a little bit of a graphic showing kind of that breakdown to illustrate my point. You know, when you're in low-traffic areas, you know, bituminous maintenance cost per mile tends to be more. As you get higher trafficked areas, your gravel cost goes up and up and up compared to bituminous. And so what I did is I just looked around the county and just picked a few roads and looked at what MINDOT And so what I did is I just looked around the county and just picked a few roads, um, and looked at what MINDOT has reported for our A D Ts, our average daily traffic. This isn't everything, this is just a few that I picked. Um, but you can see a lot of them qualify in that range. I'm not saying we're doing them, um, but it's something to consider, you know, there's other things we can look at too. Of, you know, we can dig into, you know, where we spend most of our time maintaining gravel roads and look at that actual cost. Um, you know, that's an exercise we'll go through once planning, you know, more long-term planning happens, but. Um, that's just, you know, it's things to consider, obviously the county is growing too. Um, I envision these numbers only getting higher, um, and so it's something to consider in the long term. And so I'm gonna turn it over to Josh right now, and hopefully he has better luck presenting than I do.
How's it look? Outstanding.
Looks good.
All right, uh, so my part is to talk to you a little bit about planning for equipment replacement, because a lot like bridges and roads, um, it costs a lot of money to maintain these things. And we want to make sure we have a good plan going forward. Um, one of the first points I'd like to make that, um, unlike kind of the situation with some of our road infrastructure. Uh, currently our, our equipment's in really good shape. It was something, uh, that kind of caught my eye even when I, you know, even before I was thinking about working here. Um, so really the goal of this is to try and keep it that way. And further to make sure while doing that, that we have, uh, really smooth and consistent budgeting. Um, really trying to avoid knee-jerk reactions. Um, massive amounts of spending for a handful of years followed by little to no spending. Um, which, um, so far seems to have been some of the history in the highway department. Um, currently there is, there is a replacement policy that was created in twenty-fourteen. Um, but it's not being followed, and it hasn't been getting followed for some years. Um, there was a revision in the works under, uh, Kristen while she was here that didn't quite get finished up. So we've been spending a lot of time looking at both of those policies. We'll talk a little bit more about them, I did attach the twenty-fourteen policy, uh, to the agenda, because that is the one that has been board approved. It's our most recent, uh, you know, roadmap that at one point, uh, a group of people said this is what we should be doing. Both of those plans kind of consider, uh, how old a piece of equipment is, as well as how many hours or miles are on it. And one of the things we're kind of looking for is to base the, kind of the first part of our, uh, equipment funding mostly on years. Um, again, because that's something that's very predictable, um, at so many years, this is when, you know, the board and the highway department decided we want to replace it. And then really supplement that with, uh, a priority and rating system that then helps us decide, is this the right year? We, we've now got the funding, um, but can we push it out? Can we push that purchase out or not? Um, but the, we're hoping the funding will still be tied to years, and then, you know, we'd hold that in that account if it wasn't ready to be replaced. Um, but that way, um, we're not, you know, canceling a purchase one year, uh, cutting taxes, lowering the levy, that's real great for that year. Uh, but then the following year, now we have that massive increase to make up for the equipment that was pushed out. And, you know, for example, maybe there was a front-end load or something that following year, so all of a sudden you're looking at a real big, uh, ticket purchase. Uh, in conjunction, so really, we're looking for a, a roadmap that, um, really produces smooth and consistent funding, uh, for the county. Um, I noticed, again, right away that a lot of the equipment here seems to have been purchased in a relatively short period of time. And that's great, then, uh, it's great not for us at the moment. But the challenge with that is that it, uh, kind of comes up for replacement at the same time. And so if we're trying to avoid those peaks and valleys, really the main, one of the main purposes of this plan is to smooth that out. To smooth out that replacement so that we're not doing, um, what has been done in the past as far as these peaks and valleys for spending. Um, we kind of refer to it around two thousand eight through twenty-fourteen, that was where a lot of equipment was getting replaced. And it's really been a roller coaster of spending since then. Um, before that period of time, some of the crew, um, has referred to it, equipment-wise, as the dark ages. They said that basically there, there wasn't much of a plan, they would just kind of drive things into the ground until it couldn't possibly be repaired. And then, uh, and then emergency spending would be sought to replace something. Um, during oh eight through fourteen, there was a large amount of money, um, in addition to our capital outlay, which is that out of money that Robbie was talking about, that three hundred and some thousand dollars. Um, big infusions of cash were coming from the general fund. Um, also equipment bonds were being issued, uh, lots of money poured in to get our fleet updated. And in that time range, we're averaging around eight hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars per year. That would be one of our peaks. Um, in twenty-fourteen, that policy was adopted, but really in the years coming after that, um, not only was it not followed, but it wasn't funded. And so just looking at a small timeframe of twenty-sixteen through twenty-twenty. Um, if you drop some of our finance charges from those previous years, we were down to around, on average, a hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars per year. Um, so that's, uh, obviously it was your peaks and valleys that were coming up against. Um, if we had, if we tried to get back to that policy, which isn't a very practical do- thing to do at the moment. Um, twenty-eight out of sixty-nine of the pieces of equipment that are kind of fall into this roadmap are already at or beyond, uh, what that policy said to do. So, what's up next is we kind of thought, let's look at a few different scenarios and try and figure out what each one might cost. So the first thing we started out with was, what would it take to just get back on the plan? I started by looking at the, most of our equipment is bought through MINDOT state bid process. Or we get some pretty hefty discounts, we buy the equipment through the contract that the state issues. And so I found the today's cost for the vast majority of the equipment that we currently maintain. And then a few things that would be really tedious to price today, I, if we had purchased recently, I just put a two percent annual inflation number on what we last paid. Um, but basically I got it today's cost for all of our equipment. Um, I drew up plans for each one of these scenarios through twenty-fourty-eight, which seems like a really long timeout. Um, but that way we're covering the entire, uh, life frame, uh, lifetime of all of our equipment. Because our most recent, uh, piece of equipment is a twenty-eighteen, uh, that one plan keeps that for thirty years. So that's how far out we went, we really wanted to have a plan that can smooth out those costs over the long term for all of our equipment. Uh, again, getting back to the twenty-fourteen policy. That was a plan that really had some of the shortest replacement timeframes. Uh, compared to some other ideas that we've kind of been tossing around. Uh, second pos- uh, plan that we kind of looked at would really kind of add the priority mostly to our plows and graders. Uh, while looking at pickups and some of our heavy equipment and thinking, how can we kind of extend those out a little farther than what was in the policy? And then finally, we created a third scenario that really kind of pushes everything out a bit. Um, some of it quite significantly from that original policy. Um, just a little bit also on these scenarios. I use the two, two percent, um, annual inflation rate, like I mentioned, going forward. Uh, the last decade or so is averaged around one point seven, so that seemed like a even starting point. Um, but there are some numbers that are pretty unpredictable. Um, first of all, resale and trade-in values. Um, generally, if you don't know, for heavy equipment, it's very low, um, you don't get anywhere near back, um, what these things cost to replace new. Um, but, you know, again, it's very dependent on what condition that equipment's in when we do that, but. Um, I called, um, City of Roseville, where I've worked previously and asked how they take that into account, and they don't, which I thought was strange. They don't even, um, consider the possible trade-in or resale value when they're doing their planning for equipment replacement. Um, I didn't think that was very realistic, uh, obviously we're gonna get something, so I did come up with relatively conservative, uh, trade-in numbers. Thinking, um, you know, we'd rather come out than behind, of course, when it comes to trying to plan for these budget numbers. Another kind of unpredictable, uh, factor is repair costs. Um, we can certainly theorize, um, as things get older, they should cost more to maintain. Um, but there's a lot of new technology on our diesel engines that I'll talk about a little bit later that makes them somewhat unpredictable. And, um, so there's no real, you can't create quite as clear of a roadmap as to, at this year, how much will this vehicle cost to maintain? Whereas you can have a relatively good estimate of, uh, what it will cost to replace. Uh, so first scenario, get back on policy, basically, um, if you had a look at that Word file we attached. Uh, this, in a nutshell, replaces plow trucks every nine years, uh, because there are nine tandem plow trucks. Uh, they were kind of going for one plow truck per year, I assume. Uh, graders at eleven years, pickups at ten, and most of the heavy equipment at fifteen years. Obviously, this plan, um, adequately provides for our equipment needs. And really the goal when this policy was created, uh, at least as far as I can tell, was to really minimize downtime on our equipment and maximize the resale of that equipment. As I mentioned, a lot of our equipment has already passed the timeframes set up by this policy. Um, basically, it's almost all of our pickups and plow trucks are already beyond, uh, the years that that policy had set forward. So twenty-eight out of sixty-nine pieces. And, uh, a rough estimate of what it would need just to get back on track in twenty-twenty-two is two point seven one million dollars. And as soon as I saw that, you know, I, I kind of tracked out the first year and I, I almost, I almost stopped even bothering to fill in the rest of the spreadsheet. Because obviously that's not a very practical number, um, to try and make happen. But I did fill in the rest of the spreadsheet just to have an idea so that we have a benchmark to compare to. Um, going forward, after twenty-two, we would need to start twenty-three with six hundred and forty thousand dollars in funding. And then adjust that two percent for inflation going forward, uh, to follow the policy that was created. That seemed really challenging and like a lot of money. So, we started coming up with some alternative ideas. Uh, the first thing I did was, I spent a lot of time talking with our mechanics to try and find out what, what they think. Um, I know Kristen had done the same, and the policy she was working on was kind of moving in the direction of a lot of the information that I got from them. Um, but their main priority is plow trucks and graders. They said, you know what, we don't want downtime on these, we don't want big repairs on these, they're really our highest priority. So, they, they said, what if we could get those to ten years, push out our pickup trucks, push out our heavy equipment? So that's what the scenario does. Um, th- this plan, I think, still really adequately funds our highest priority equipment. Um, it adds a little bit of useful life to our pickups and heavy equipment that I think is still very doable. Um, but possibly we'd be shedding some of the resale value if we're keeping things longer, especially that heavy equipment, if you're getting up to thirty years, will have depreciated quite a bit. Um, basically, this plan will cost around five hundred thousand dollars in twenty-two to initiate. And then increase that amount to percent for inflation going forward. And then even with that adjustment, early on, because our plow trucks were bought in pairs, uh, this last batch. Um, in twenty-three and twenty-four, we still would have a shortfall of four hundred and forty-one thousand dollars that would need to be resolved. Uh, maybe we could push them out a little bit, or, um, you know, see what ideas we could come up with. But other than that, um, then, you know, our pot of money basically for equipment replacement would stay solvent until about the mid-forties. Um, there's a lot of the heavy equipment at thirty years, it all kind of comes due in that decade, so that's why, um, this scenario and the next one both show going negative then. But it's only by about sixty to a hundred thousand dollars, so I hope by then, um, trade-in values would have improved, and that could probably be made up for by then. Um, a side note as to kind of why they are pushing for this ten-year plan on our plows and, um, graders. Uh, so basically, they have new technology in the engines that didn't exist before. In the era, uh, basically right when we were buying all this equipment, um, the tier four emission standard was kind of coming online. Where diesel engines needed to get a lot cleaner. Um, the technology to do that was, it didn't exist really before, and so it was new and experimental. And so pretty much all of the truck manufacturers had a lot of glitches. Um, in Roseville, we had internationals, which were, kind of have a reputation for being the worst among the one, the glitches, and there's been many. You know, five thousand dollar repairs on engines that are a few years old. And I know they've had some of those issues here too. Um, if you look at this graph, the longer darker red line shows our last, um, old truck, basically a pre-emissions diesel engine, if you will. And you can see the new trucks that all came in, uh, in the beginning of the decade. Um, their maintenance costs go up a lot faster, and most of those costs are tied to this, uh, emission system. Um, one of them, in fact, has already exceeded, uh, the cost of maintaining the seventeen-year-old truck at, you know, just a little bit over half its age. So really, this is one of the main reasons why, uh, the mechanics are so concerned about keeping a, what might appear to be a relatively short, uh, timeframe for a replacement of those priority pieces of equipment, just because they really are costing a lot more money to re- maintain than, um, they used to. And honestly, there's no way to know for sure, um, what's next with them, because this technology's never been used before. Um, of course, all the dealers are saying things have gotten better. We sure hope so. You know, everybody that, that deals with diesel engines right now is hopeful of that. Um, that, that technology's coming along and hopefully the next batch as we move, um, into replacing these trucks again at some point, uh, will be more reliable and hopefully less, um, big ticket repairs early on. We came up with a third scenario, uh, just to try and drive costs down a little further. Basically, uh, we call it the one-a-year plan, I kind of put plow trucks and graders into one pool. Uh, we've got fourteen of them, so I thought, well, what if we just get down to replacing one of those per year? Um, fourteen, fourteen years is what MINDOT generally shoots for on their plow trucks. So, uh, a lot of times cities and counties use what MINDOT does as kind of a benchmark. Uh, we don't necessarily have to follow, but it seems like a relatively reasonable life, uh, for a plow truck. But we can assume that as we get closer to those, uh, longer years, that we'll have more repair costs and breakdowns. Um, I pushed pickups out to twenty years on this plan, which I think still seems reasonable. I mean, we have some that are towards that age, they're getting rusty, they still get from A to B, they still are kind of serving our needs. And then again, heavy equipment is still at thirty, minus a couple smaller pieces of equipment that I didn't think, um, you know, to take more wear. Um, kind of the challenge with this plan though is because all the trucks were bought in pairs, um, the transition period, uh, would take a little bit longer to get through than that fourteen-year turnover. So the last truck would go at sixteen years, and then the last grader at eighteen years. Um, Steve's really concerned about that eighteen-year grader. So one way we could maybe look at kind of working on that would be to either do another lease to own to get it turned out a little sooner, but spread out that cost further into the future. Um, in our highway committee meeting, we also talked about possibly doing reeferds on the engine. Um, to try and get more life out of the equipment, I've already been talking to the dealers about that, and we're gonna get some prices to see if maybe that'd be a plan that could, uh, be worthwhile for us. This plan comes in at about four hundred and fifteen thousand dollars in twenty-twenty-two, and then again, uh, just two percent annually for inflation. Um, it doesn't require an initial funding bump, uh, stays positive up until the forties again, uh, just like the second scenario. Um, at this point, Robbie and I aren't really advocating for anyone, one of these plans specifically, I think that'll be our next step. But really, at this point, we're just looking for feedback, just like the highway committee, um, as is with this one. Um, we just kind of wanted to come up with some information and get it to you and say, what do you think? Which direction do you think we should go? What kind of spending seems practical and doable and sustainable? You know, even once we do land on kind of a starting point for this plan, uh, it'd still be, you know, something that would be reviewed and adjusted every year. You know, if our resales are coming in way higher than I expected, then we'd be wanting to cut that number down. There's, we're not trying to make more money than we need, and, you know, we don't have some sort of pet project, we're trying to covertly fund, that's not the case at all. Uh, we just really want to have a plan going forward that the board thinks is a sustainable way to, um, fund this for the long term. Um, I, I hope we'll all agree that the wait till it's broke plan isn't necessarily a real good one. Um, that, I think, is kind of what led to such massive spending early on in the decade. And, um, really, we're hoping to just get to a better place than that, and I, I think you'll all agree with that. Um, so with that, Robbie's just gonna do a little bit of a summary of all of this, and then we'll take your feedback and see what you think.
Awesome, thank you, Josh.
You're welcome.
All right, we got a couple of things for funding, summary, and we're done, so, promise, we are getting there. Uh, bring it back to here, all right. So, a couple additional funding sources, um, for our county roads. Um, and again, this is consistent annual funding sources that we can spend on our county roads. And again, this is consistent annual funding sources that we can spend on our county roads. Like I mentioned, our transportation sales tax fund. When I've talked to Brady about this, and generally speaking, you know, we expect our revenue out of there to be about $800,000 a year. You know, you hope it grows, but for now, we're sitting at right around that figure, I believe. What happened, though, is two projects in particular are going to pretty much eat that all up. So about $780,000 of that will be tied up in bond payments for the next 10 to 15 years. And that's due to the 17 project and County Road 45. The remainder of, a good chunk of our cash balance then that was in there is going to be used on the Cross River Bridge and the Carlson Creek Bridge that I had mentioned earlier, that we're doing this next summer. So as far as the TST fund is concerned, you know, we'll be able to save up over the long term. But you figure, you know, doing a little math based on what we talked about before, even if you just look at the culverts, you know, coming in at $350,000 to $400,000 for a project cost there and up. You know, it's good, it would take a while just to save up for one. The last bit I'll talk about, SARS funding, is our Town Bridge/Town Road account. That was a recent thing we just passed this year, so the unorganized territory roads, which is great, it's going to help. Recently, the board had passed that. We designated about 57 miles of roadway as unorganized territory roads. This includes eight bridges. This is great, it's a new reliable, sustainable revenue stream that we get from the state, but that we can use on these county roads, which is awesome. Maintenance funds, I think we'll get about $30,000 a year. Projects, as far as bridges are concerned, it won't fund a whole project every single year. I think it opens us up to apply for projects if there are additional funds available. But the foot's in the door there, which is nice. The last thing I'll do is just go over a quick summary of everything, and then we'll open it up for a little round robin. So just to go over everything real quick, based on our current level of service, we have about $360,000 a year to split between equipment replacement and local roadway projects. The three plans Josh presented, there's the current board-approved one would require $2.7 million upfront, and then $640,000 per year. And then adjust that for inflation every year. A mid-range plan we looked at, we think we might be able to toss around some equipment early on. Maybe that gets rid of that kind of $441,000 boost we'd initially need. We'd have, we have to dig into that some more. But the mid-range plan would require that boost, a little under half a million, and then it would cost about half a million a year. And then the last one we came up with, this one-a-year plan would average, or would start at $415,000 per year, and obviously, 2% until we retire. Kind of summarizing our infrastructure replacement, a little under a quarter of our local bridges are deficient. Like I had mentioned, on average, we have the second-worst infrastructure rating in the state. The culverts are the majority of our structures, it's about $350,000 on average. Currently, pretty much all of our paved county roads qualify for resurfacing. About half of them qualify for reclaiming and resurfacing. It's about $1 million a mile to pave, keep that in mind. And, you know, county growth, you know, as time goes on, could potentially see more county roads being paved. Something I want to point out quick, too, before I'm done, is the state of Minnesota had stepped in a couple of years ago to help perform inspections in the county on our bridges. They came back and pretty much said if we don't figure out something, they're going to close roads. And so if it does continue with this trend, you know, it's kind of out of our hands at this point. It could get to that point of the state stepping in and closing roads. This actually happened, I believe, down in Fillmore County in 2011. That happened, and so it's a very real thing that can occur. And so that is kind of the end of our fact-sharing or presentation, if you will. And I guess, if any, I'm sure there's questions, but we'll just kind of open it up.
Thank you. It's pretty daunting. The old, the old one-two punch, and there's a third punch with our buildings as well, I know. See, we're going to need a as comprehensive as the presentations, where we're going to even need a more comprehensive as far as what the board's priorities are and how we're going to address them. But who wants to, who wants to ask questions first or make comments?
One more thing real quick is, our, sorry. Josh and I, you know, and he had mentioned it about, you know, we're trying to figure out these kind of long-term, sustainable plans. Like, we want to be boring, that's the goal. Like, you don't want to, I don't want to come here again and have to be like, you know, half of our fleet broke and a bridge collapsed, pick one. Like, you know, this is, this is, this is stuff we want to plan for. You know, we're out into 2048 in the equipment replacement, like, awesome. You know, this is stuff that we do want to figure out and just not have to deal with anymore.
Yeah, and that's, that's how we do that, is with that long-term planning, right? If, if this kind of thing had been done in the past, we'll be in, we would have been in a different situation. And I do applaud the work for 2014, it's a, it's too bad the policy couldn't be adhered to there, and for good reason as well, just because that, that cost would have been happening then. But until now and beyond, so I get it, but um, yeah, but moving forward is where we're at now, so. Thank you, that's, that's sobering and, and also very important. Well, any, any other commissioners have some comments, questions, perspectives? It's a lot. Yeah, Commissioner Hawkins, please.
Well, I saw this presentation earlier and been thinking about it and reading the 2014 plan. I just want to remind us, we, the board did see a long-range financial management plan. And I'm rather disappointed that there were plans for buildings and new jails in that plan. But nothing about equipment or road replacement. So I just want to remind us that when we make a policy decision, it's really extremely important that we follow through and make sure it makes sense budgetarily. If, if we can't afford it, it's kind of worthless. So I really applaud Robbie and Josh for taking the time to really lay out the numbers. And I think they're doing great research and work, and hopefully, we can get a plan and realize that when we make decisions of spending over here, it affects them over here. And that's true in all our departments. And so we, as commissioners, need to take the overall view and make sure that we know what we actually have to have. And I think we have to have roads, we have to have bridges. And we're going to have to make some hard choices of how we spend taxpayer dollars, so. It's not going to be fun, but it's going to be important work.
It wasn't fun putting this together. I mean, I like it, but very sobering, I think David said.
Chairman Mills?
Thank you, Commissioner Hawkins, and yeah, Commissioner Story.
Yes, well, thank you both, Robbie and Josh, for putting this together. It's, it's a lot to take in right now, but my initial response is, it's kind of like, you know, when you have a pain in your toe and you go to the doctor, he has the answer. Not that you're a pain in the toe, you're the doctors here. And what I would appreciate is, as you are setting this out, A, B, and C plan. And with the fact that our bridges are bad, the fact that we probably are overspending with sodium chloride, I don't know how you cut back on that, because we did that one year, and it was not pleasant hearing from the people. So I don't know if that's an area that can be, but I guess as a board member, I would look to you to give a presentation as to how you line things up. And then, and then we look at that with you, because it's a team effort. We look at it with you and then work with you as to how we can come up to support you with the, with the funding. So we'll look forward to that with you.
Thanks, Jenny. Yeah, no, and that's why we put this together was like, kind of realizing how all of this ties together. You know, it's not just, I want to do bridges, okay, let's go do a bridge. You know, right now, you look at it and, you know, you can kind of make it even in simpler terms of our $360,000 can't even cover the cheapest equipment replacement plan. Not to mention having to, you know, fix all of our infrastructure. And so, you know, whether you want to say I can cover one, but then I can't do the other, you know, is, is up for debate, I guess, but yeah, no, it is, it's a lot of info. And we're not expecting any solutions right now, but just to kind of get this out and, you know, let it, let it percolate in the back of your heads.
Yeah, it's going to have to, I think, be in the front here right quick, but um, speaking of the calcium chloride, you had mentioned some other counties do it a little differently. Could you elaborate on that, please?
Sure, the, in the response, I didn't ask them to elaborate too much, so it was just kind of, you know, if they decided to. But it sounded like what happened was if the county did kind of big projects, if we were doing bridge replacements or there, we knew there was going to be a lot of hauling out of a gravel pit. You know, then they would go in and perform that application just to mitigate that. As far as an annual expense of doing, you know, a good chunk of roads, they don't do that. So I believe what they do is there's local contractors. The residents call them, and then they perform the work.
Interesting, and I'm presuming there could be a hybrid of that if, if, you know, haul, well, yeah, I guess I don't know the ins and outs well enough, but that's, that's interesting, yeah, it's worth looking into.
It was, it was just a number that really jumped out to me. I didn't mean to pick on it, I just thought, I was like, huh, that's a lot of money. And, you know, because, because I feel like I hope this illustrates, you know, we're not talking about $1,000 here and there. You know, or being, you know, kind of sort of slightly underfunded and whatever, you know, this is a conversation of, of a lot. So that's why I saw that, and I was like, huh, what's everyone else do? And I was like, oh, they don't. But totally depends, you know, we're, like Josh said, we're not set on anything, it's just a matter of presenting information.
Sorry, James, I saw Commissioner Sullivan had her hand up earlier, and then, and then we can go to you.
So I just wanted to remark that I found it really curious that the state could actually close roads if we don't give it our best thoughts and figure this out right away. And so I would say this needs to be a real high priority. And it's also a priority regarding safety when you look at those bridges. So I thank both for all of the work that you've done and the way you've laid it out so that we can analyze this and come to the best decision possible.
Thank you. Yeah, it's, you know, it's the, so it's the NBI, the National Bridge Inventory, is federal-funded. And so that's how that, all, you know, it's a lot of federal mandates that we have to follow in our inspection routines. And so those don't get followed, maintenance doesn't occur, bridges don't get replaced. You know, it starts to kind of tick up the list of, hey, what are you guys doing? So yeah, no, it's, I mean, we have to do it.
Administrator Yoki?
Yes, I just want to echo the praise that Commissioners Hawkins and Sullivan gave to Robbie and Josh, and also should mention Lisa Sorley and Randy Roberts. The whole leadership team in the Highway Department is hitting on all cylinders, and they're doing some really great work. And this is the kind of information that we need and that you all need to make informed decisions about how we move forward. The other thing I wanted to mention is that Chairman Mills, you, you mentioned that this doesn't even touch on building needs. And I did have the pleasure of going over to the Highway Department campus a week and a half ago and kind of do a tour with Robbie and Josh of the buildings there to look at what, what some of their needs are. And so there are a number of needs, really, in, in all of their buildings. And then, as you're aware, we have other needs in our other existing buildings. The courthouse steps on the east side for, or on the south side, for example, need to be fixed, they're crumbling. We've got boiler issues here at the courthouse, we've got a number of other things that, that we need to be taking a look at. And so that is part of the bigger picture in terms of figuring out how we address these needs. And I'm, I'm not going to be coming forward saying that we need a new jail or that we need to build new buildings. I think we have a lot of good infrastructure in place, we maintained well. And we do have some equipment, you know, some HVAC needs that we have to address. But that is part of the larger discussion. And so in the coming months, I'm working with Brian Silas to try to characterize those needs. I know we have data from building studies that have been done, I think, back in 2018 and earlier. So we do have some information to work with there. But that's also something that you're going to be hearing about in the coming months as we try to figure out what our plan should be in terms of capital projects.
Yes, thank you. That'll, that'll help give us a more comprehensive picture of the situation. I know from our AMC district meeting last year, probably 2019, I guess it would have been. Transportation, the state transportation system is, was a topic of conversation, a very hot topic. I guess back in the 50s, Minnesota was the leader in our, our, our roads and bridge network. And, and since that time, nobody, the state, counties, in general, have not kept up the required maintenance and have been unwilling to fund these, these priorities. And at the state level, a lot of the back and forth is between the rural and the metro, because there's so many more users in the metro, but there's so many more miles in the rural that it's just a constant battle that the legislature has made inadequate progress on. And so I wonder how much of, how much of that we're feeling. And it's going to hurt at some point here, if it's, if you're feeling like it's not hurting already as far as the dollars needed are concerned. So thank you both for, for putting these numbers together, and it will certainly help shape the conversation moving forward. And as Commissioner Hawkins, and I think we're all in agreement, that roads and bridges are something we absolutely need. And, and as Commissioner Sullivan said, it's a public safety issue. And, and yeah, I think, I think we can, we can agree that this isn't something we can, we can really push off. And the sooner we, we develop a full-fledged plan to address this, the better. Any, any other comments, conversation?
Chairman Mills?
Commissioner Starlee, please.
Thank you. That reminds me, your discussion about the history of the state and how well we were taken care of back then. When I'd go to AMC meetings, and I, at that time, was on the Highway Commission, I would just come out of those meetings and say, you know, we got to do something. The feds aren't coming up, the state's not coming up. So I went to Brady and I said, you know, what about this sales tax? Do you think that would work? And so we looked into it, and so look at 700, 800,000 coming in. And I was kind of apprehensive last year because we didn't know how many people were going to be coming to Cook County. Well, now we know. So our sales taxes stayed quite nicely. And that's because, you know, we, you just have to reach out and say, and grab whatever you can to help support this particular need. There's other needs too, but for this particular need, the sales tax has really been a godsend, so.
Yeah, that's an excellent point, Commissioner Starlee.
Excellent point, Commissioner Starly.
Oh, I hear myself echo away.
I hear myself echoing.
Is that just me? Oh, it's Brady. Did you wanna, did you want to speak, Brady?
Yeah, I was just gonna mention a couple of things. Just on our, our transportation sales tax that our best year was uh twenty nineteen. We were at eight hundred and eighty-eight thousand. And, you know, we'll have a down year for twenty twenty. But just to give it some perspective, so we're looking at eight hundred and that's conservative um in in this plan. But that could, you know, that could help if that rebounds and continues up from twenty nineteen. And just uh historical, when you were talking about the six hundred thousand plus that they were spending ten years ago to uh to to get the equipment back in shape when Dave was here. And how did they do that? Um, that was primarily because we got the big jump in the BWCA money. Uh, about, that was two thousand nine. It went from seven hundred and twenty-four thousand to two million. And uh I was trying to reserve some of it, but it, it quickly, a large portion of it went to the funding of the getting that equipment back up in the Highway Department and that plan. So, just some history.
Yeah.
That history helps a lot, um, gives, gives a lot of good perspective. I was gonna, I was gonna also bring up the, the sales taxes, Commissioner Starly. So that's the, um, and which, how you called it, Brady, was the transportation sales tax, right? That's um, it's the gas tax, more or less, that, that we've got going versus straight-up sales tax or lodging tax or any of those other funding sources, which sure, the gas tax is gonna be um indicative of, of how many visitors we have, but sometimes I wonder if it's quite doing the job for the costs, the, the real costs that are incurred by our highway department to accommodate the large number of visitors. And so I'm wondering if there's room for a conversation um at the state level about looking at, looking at options and and situations like that. Um, when we're talking about other um, other counties and um and their populations as, you know, as comparables um with roads and bridges. Um, I would be really curious just to see, I mean, you, you did a great job of showing the bridges. I'm, I'm curious about the number of miles of roads and, you know, blacktop versus gravel. I know there's a lot of different factors there, but that might help give us a little more perspective too on, on where we sit and and what, what, what's to be done. Or maybe not, maybe it's just a red herring information, but thought it could be.
Yeah, the roadway, no, that's a good point. And I wanted, I specifically left out roadway um because although population size were one of the smallest, geographically, we're one of the biggest. And so that's why I was like, well, roadway wouldn't be fair. Um, that's not a good comparison. And so that's why I left it at bridges. And so like, you know, the, the slide had shown, you know, some of these counties have a smaller population, three to four times as many structures, and, you know, two percent are structurally deficient. So, you know, that's what I thought, to me, had stuck out quite a bit. It'd be different if we were comparing roads. Um, but we just, that plays into the, the geographical size then, um, which we're on the larger end of, so.
Yeah, I'm really curious how they did it. How, how did, how did they get there and how did we get here? You know, that's where that history would be really helpful. It's not necessarily gonna hand us the answer, but but it, it might just force us to take our medicine, you know, so. Uh, Attorney Hickon, I saw you bop up there. Did, did you have anything to add or was that just a video test? I'll take it as a video test, okay? Any other uh questions, comments, ideas, brainstorming? Attorney Hickon, there you are again. Did you have something you wanted to add?
I didn't know. Um, somebody came and put on my video without my permission, so.
You'll have that. All right, yeah, any other, I mean, even, I mean, this is, this is all just for discussion at this point, so any other spitball ideas or whatever, it's it's a good time for it, but otherwise, as, as uh Engineer Ha said, this can just roll around in our, in our heads for a while and um while we come up with some brilliant solutions. Uh, Commissioner Hawkins.
I'm just wondering if we have a timeline of when to expect another report from you with what your recommendations are.
Uh, we can, I know Josh has to, was going to dig into kind of the rehab stuff a little bit more on the equipment. Um, like, um, I think it was Stan had brought it up in our Highway Committee meeting. Um, and so we're gonna dig into that some more um and try and get a plan in place for that, or an idea of how much that would cost. Um, the, the, the bridge stuff's a little more difficult to say I definitely need, like, you can look at the info and you can say, well, yeah, we can, you know, let's start replacing things. Um, it's hard to predict ahead because obviously there's a chunk of structures um that, you know, don't need replacing right now. And so it's hard to, you know, you can kind of guess, you know, the trajectory, trajectory of where they're gonna end up. Um, but, you know, things happen. And so um, you know, I kind of have an idea in my head of what I think going forward would be sustainable for the department um to spend on infrastructure, um specifically too, because I don't know, you know, if we end up, if we start paving roads, you know, that's a whole other cost. Um, you know, and normally, you know, I came from bridges, so I can like talk about bridges all day. But um, but as far as, you know, plans to to pave, you know, that's a whole other, you know, thing that's, that's in here too. And uh, you know, I can start trying to kind of collate some data that we have, you know, here at the department and kind of compare it to traffic counts and see if there's any sort of like, yeah, this is a higher traffic count and yes, we're spending more time here. Now let's kind of look at that and see, you know, obviously go talk to people that are gonna be affected by it, you know, that's, that's a big part of this too. Um, to to see. So I think the equipment thing is very easy to nail down. Um, specifically, as far as like, this amount, two percent till twenty fifty, and we're done. You know, any plans that, you know, I have for our infrastructure is more, because then if we get a grant, well, then that's money we can save up for some of these more expensive bridges as well. Um, or roadway projects, whatever it might be. So as far as to answer your question, next month, I can wait a little bit. Uh, up to you, when do you want it?
Well, um, I, I was gonna comment and then, yeah, I'll go to Administrator Yorki. Um, just as we're talking about our list here and needing to prioritize. And just, we've gotten significant feedback from, from the public saying that we need to maintain what we have before we add more, right? And I'm not saying this is how it is, and this is how I firmly stand. I'm just saying we want to consider this, that uh it could be looked at that adding pavement is, is an addition, you know? And it, it really, it really could and probably in many situations does make sense in the long haul to go through that because of traffic counts. But just hearing the state of the bridges and hearing the um, the needs of our cap, of our equipment as well as the needs of our buildings, I'm thinking that we might need to shift the paving priority back and, and and, and that's just what I, what I would take from first flush, but, but again, yeah, yeah. So, but Administrator Yorki.
Yeah, I was just going to add, um, you know, I think, a- again, because this is part of a larger discussion that includes facilities. Um, I, I think, and I don't know the specific answer to your question, uh Commissioner Hawkins, but I do know that we need to have a really good common operating picture before we start the next budget cycle. And so, you know, that gives us a few months here to, to really start defining what that picture is so that you all can start making, uh, so that we can all start making decisions about how we're going to allocate county resources to address these needs.
Okey-dokey. More, any, any more other, this was good, good conversation.
What it's worth too, you know, if, if we're able to come to a, to a decision, you know, that turns into kind of a sustainable, long-term plan here, that, you know, that doesn't mean I'm gonna stop looking for grants and other funding sources. Um, you know, the, the hard thing with grants is they're generally kind of specific, you know, whether it's a, you know, trout streams. Um, we have a few and they would cover that, which is, which is great. Um, but, but it's not a county-wide solution. It's not reliable. Um, federal funding um is sometimes available. I think it's on every three or five years somewhere in there. Um, and again, a lot of times with federal funding, they don't count a bridge until twenty feet. So now you have this from ten to twenty-foot range, which happens to be a good chunk of our culverts um that, you know, wouldn't even qualify. So, yeah, I mean, just if, you know, when we do figure something out, we're gonna figure out something. Um, uh, that, that doesn't, you know, stop that process of looking for alternate sources too.
Robbie, could we, could we excavate some of those shorter spans so that they end up requiring a longer bridge?
I think that's how it works, yes.
Oh, you shouldn't even joke about that. That'll, that'll make the news right there.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, I, I, I wanted to, you know, I wanted to walk back my um maybe harsh, harsher than necessary uh assessment of the state. And, and I want to recognize that, you know, there is the fed, the feds to play in here too. It's not just like you guys are doing bad or whatever, you know, so I understand, yes, there's, there's us, the state and the feds all needing to get on a similar page and prioritize. And I know that this is a conversation at the federal level um ongoing about the state of uh the infrastructure around the country, so. Hmm, that was my only other walk back.
It's a great point. And it, I think it illustrates too, you look at what just recently was passed in a bridge bonding bill. And that would potentially fund, you know, I have those slated for twenty twenty-two. So that right there is already two structures that even if we had a plan in place would now that money could get allocated to future projects. But then we don't need to, you know, come back and have these conversations all the time about. Um, heck, even one, if one of them got done, you know, and so it's great that, you know, when, when the legislature and that kind of stuff can come together and say, hey, there's this need. And like you had said, you know, the big boom in the fifties, transportation boom of everything getting done. But now, you know, if you start doing math from the fifties to now, that's about the life cycle of a lot of structures is in that seventy-year range. And you're seeing it more and more. Um, you know, it just, we stick out like a sore thumb, so.
Yeah, I want to go visit Kitzin County. It looks like the land of bridges there.
Right? It's like two hundred something.
Yeah. Uh, they, they must have a bridge festival. I'm sure of it, yeah.
If there's one, I'll invite you.
Yeah, thank you.
Everybody.
We'll have a quorum. Uh, is there any, any, any other, uh, any other thoughts at this point? Requests? Otherwise, um, I guess we can move on. Thank you both, Josh and Robbie, for, for presenting and uh yeah, much, much needed information there and uh we'll meet it again in the future, in the not-too-distant future.
Definitely. We'll keep moving on this stuff and, yeah, whether it's next month or in two months, we'll try and um you know, have, have some more information too to, to help this process. So thanks, everybody. And, and if you need anything, just call me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Take care.
Well, um, that brings us to item four on the agenda and um those are um the minutes of personnel in the building committee. Any uh, any questions or comments about that, um, those items? Otherwise, our, our committee, the whole session can be over. We can go on with our day.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you, Commissioner Starly and, and everybody, Commissioner Sullivan, Commissioner Hawkins, Administrator Yorki, Attorney Hickon.